This is a regular meeting, planning for a town. So the Open Public Meeting Act, laws of nineteen seventy-five, the public has been notified that the planning for a move, you don't do a look, uh, since February eighteenth, now. Middletown planning board has been notified as a very important restee and dependent to Starlight two hundred times on December twentieth, two thousand thirteen. Notice that the meeting was filed as a township clerk, proposed in town hall on December twentieth, two thousand thirteen. Although the patience for this meeting will give me pursuant to the open public meeting act at least forty-eight hours' residence. Your vote?
Mr. Chairman, please. And?
Yes.
Here.
Here.
Mr. O'Shannon.
Here.
The last name?
Yeah.
And Mr. Shiebix?
Here.
Here. All rise and smooth flight.
United States of America, consider your public protestants, one nation under God, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
Under administrative matters, the payment of vouchers, over business two thousand thirteen two oh six, Trinity Hall LLC, and the new business two thousand fourteen two oh one, made in Reno, and two thousand fourteen two oh four, Havana and Mason will not be heard to be carried to the draw second meeting.
All right, uh, approval for resolutions.
Yeah, for one. Two thousand twelve two oh nine, Memorial Center, federal and Kansas City Center, was an approval for amended preliminary final major site plan. You have a motion, please?
Subpoor. Second.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Neck?
Yes.
Mr. Corbell?
Here, yes.
Mr. O'Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rannan?
Yes.
Mr. Shiebix?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
And Mrs. Galloway, she's going first.
Okay. Viviana, Elbada, and me. Uh, Mason, sorry, did you get a data service working or did this sound less? No, I'm saying, but did you get a data service, so it didn't care?
Yes.
In order. Um, and returning, we need to ask the last second question. And... Okay, uh, for the resolutions. Again, this is an open meeting with the public. Is there anything not on the agenda the public would like to bring before us today? All right, thank you. All right, first thing then, under administrative matters, payment of vouchers, Carl?
Our review of payment of vouchers for tonight's meeting, and a total of nine thousand four hundred ten dollars and sixty cents are approved and reviewed and motion to approve.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
So, okay, that brings us to old business. Attorney Hall. Yes, you're in next.
Mr. Chair, in the last, John Jocko of Givana Valley. At the last meeting, there was a, uh, the hearing was closed, but there became an issue that was raised by the, uh, Mr. Lewinsky's traffic consultant, that the, uh, there was a discrepancy and that the driveways didn't quite align. In fact, we went out and looked at that issue, and that's correct. However, we also...
Correct, that they do not align.
They do not align because, uh, the driveway location had been relocated at some time in the past, uh, from the data that was being relied on. In any event, the driveway would move about sixty feet to the north, and it would, uh, put it in a position then to be directly aligned with the Robinson driveway. If that were to occur, our analysis shows that the sightlines from Robinson and Currie's driveway would remain the same, and that there would be an additional twenty-five feet in the left-hand turn lane, and that the sightline from Mohegan Drive north would be at its maximum because it's blocked by a, uh, an embankment feature, if you will, at Mohegan, and the sightlines from Trinity going south would improve slightly, and the only relocation on the site would be some landscaping. It creates no variances. So even though those are minor improvements, they're really not very significant, and what we would, I would suggest, even with the sub, not suggest, it looks like the southern radius of the driveway would actually be, it would overlap the northern radius of the driveway we proposed. So that puts us in a position of having presented the intention of aligning the driveways, which were clients remaining to do. We had, there in front, there was an application with the driveway in a specific location, and by the way, the ordinance does not require the driveway to be aligned. So, if the opportunity presents itself for the board to consider this application and that issue, I would like to suggest, in any event, there was an approval, our clients are prepared to either accept the driveway and the location and show relocated in alignment, subject to a delegation for your engineer to review, or in the alternative, perhaps you make it a condition of approval, we would happily return to the board for a, uh, site plan amendment to go through that in more detail. So, in serp, in summary, it did in fact seem, uh, a bit silly, we listened to it, however, rejected further, and it would, uh, we did say it would align, it would have to move slightly to the north. If this were happening during construction, I would suggest it would be a field change that would never come in front of us, or in front of you. All of the roadway improvements are already going to be in place in those locations, the road grating, widening, and the elevation will all stay the same.
Mr. Jocko, I have a question. Would there be any, if you did make a slight change, would there be any change in the stacking of automobiles from Comanche to the entrance of making that left turn?
There wouldn't be room for one, possibly two additional vehicles.
And that would be how many vehicles?
Room, I'd say.
Could we discuss that?
Can I? Pardon me. I have, I have a bit of a problem with this. And add is that there's no testimony, it was just representation. So the representation by the applicant's attorney is that they're asking, number one, prove it as is, with the driveways not aligned with the Robinson driveway. Or two, make it a condition of the approval that is delegated to Mr. Keating. Or three, uh, make it a condition of approval that they come back showing you that plan. So, once we start getting beyond all the that, I think we're now, basically, it's, we require, in my opinion, testimony from their engineer, their traffic consultant, or somebody else, and the more we go down that road, the more complicated we're gonna make tonight's proceedings.
But I have a question. What, or, what was the actual stacking initially?
More, if you can. But that's a representation, representation, as I said, he can't, he's not, not giving testimony, I'm just saying.
Right, right. And with that, I, the public hearing has been closed, and this is now, as my understanding, the panel of this is public on it.
I'm sure Mr. Gennodraski wants to say something. I'm sure you wanted to say something.
Well, I would say first that, uh, Mr. Gorman has really got to think of the comments that I was gonna make. Mr. Jocko is not an engineer. Uh, there were plans that were submitted to this board, uh, they were testified to. Uh, Mr. Jocko, including he says that at some time in the past, in the dent, the driveway on the Robinson property was moved. I don't know whether that's so or not so, and I could understand how a mistake was made, but it was in fact a mistake. Uh, the interest and interest of the subject, you could not align directly to the street, uh, on the Robinson property. Now, I read the transcripts from last hearing, and, you know, Mr. Littori came up with quite a rudimentary measure that which says prove to be accurate, so it's gotta be corrected. And Mr. Jocko said, we will do that. Now, I was coming before you and saying, well, maybe we walk to it, maybe we can do it, but we don't know whether we can or we can't. And right now, these plans are inaccurate. They're not complete. They require further drawings. We don't know whether or not it's in fact an intent to move this driveway to a distance, whether it's north or south, that the topography will permit it. You just simply don't have that information before you. And he has his fallback position, even if we can't move it, it's okay where it is. And the real danger of proceeding forward is that if in fact you're to approve this condition upon is moving the driveway, and you can't do it, you'll then come back and say that the change is so insignificant that it really isn't necessary. So, my position is, is that this particular application is not properly before you because you don't simply have the complete inaccurate set of plans. Now, what to do with that, I don't know the answer to that. And maybe, uh, what Mr. Jocko says, you have to simply look at this as a plan that is inaccurate. All the testimony that was given to you by the experts with regard to ingress, egress, stacking, traffic, uh, and the like, is simply inaccurate. Then you have to go to, I don't see how you can do, but obviously, you're gonna look to your professionals for guidance. So, again, I think that Mr. Jocko's comments are that he's staffed, he's not an engineer.
Nope, it's perfect, and certainly, this hearing and this record is not gonna be perfect. And if we try to strive for perfection, we're never gonna get it. Mr. DeCina, may it be, to the extent that it didn't seem likely that Mr. Littori's pacing was more accurate than the, than the drawings given to the board, that didn't seem likely, but indeed, that's the way it turns out for the representation of the town areas. That's where we are. Uh, I frankly, it didn't come across that I was beating up Mr. Littori in the transcript, I hope not, but I certainly sounded doubtful that he was correcting his pacing, but he was, and the plans are wrong. Mr. Jocko has acknowledged that, the board's gotta move forward. So, if we're gonna have to go back and redo everything to get it perfect, I don't know how long that takes for when this proceeding ends. There's finite meetings, finite time, finite everything. Uh, so, Mr. Jocko has, rather than submitting, or offering to submit the plans during this proceeding, has given the board options, and it's up to the board at this point, Dan, hear the public, and then we'll go from there. But, at least there's nothing new before the board now, other than, here they are, acknowledge that they're not right, there's no new plan, acknowledge there's no new plan. I'm sure they can put one in, but that's just gonna start us on the merry-go-round of more testimony and more evidence. So, at this stage, we're sitting, it's Mr. Gorman's and Mr. Jocko has put his case in, with that request from the board saying, at the end of all this, he's asking for the board to do, prove it as is, prove it as a condition, delegate it, or three, to say, we'll come back and we'll show you that it works better than we think. Is it messier than, I'm sure the board would like, but that's where it's at. And this is unusual, but here we are. And how material the issue is, is something the board will have to decide. And, I think what Mr. Gennodraski was saying, the board can't proceed tonight, and to that, I would say, I don't, I think you can and you should proceed. They've rested, and the public has a chance to come. Otherwise, we all go home. I mean, yeah, yeah. I don't know why, but we did come back.
I think the real question, in, at least in my mind, Mr. Keating, is, plans were presented as they were, with a, in effect, mislocation of the driveway, that's the entrance to the entire site. And you're viewed it as if it were in the right place. If that driveway is moved sixty-five feet, roughly, something like that, what does that do to the alignment of everything else on that site? If you can answer that question. And, what should I be, what should be more concerned, or what would be more aptly your concerns in that, which may be absolutely done, other than okay, just twisting it around like this, and it's good, or do you need to reevaluate the whole thing?
I, I think, uh, by, by moving approximately sixty feet, the, the slope on site, it gets a little bit steeper as you continue in that direction. Obviously, they have to revise grading when they do that. Um, that's not a concern at this point for me, I'd have to look at that when they propose. Um, I, I think as long as they're not affecting the onsite, um, features in any way that are gonna lessen any type of setbacks, buffers, things of that nature, um, it's likely that I can just review it from an administrative perspective, and if, if I do find, after I have a plan to review, that there are significant, uh, changes, then I would have to have a discussion, certainly with Jason, and in the worst case, we would have to come back to the board if anything significant comes out of that that's relative to, um, the site impacts and whatever.
So we can continue tonight?
And that's Mr. Gorman's advice?
Yes.
Just to have any effect on the road, or anything to change the grade? Well, it's, it's not changing the rate, it's, they're getting into...
Well, it drops right off, if you look at that.
I understand, it's getting into a steeper area, they're gonna have to address in any way, um, but as, if you recall, during the multiple meetings, there was additional grading information that has to be provided for us to review. Certainly, that change would have to be provided for us to review. The question, you know, the question, one thing I'll look at is, one, first of all, how are they gonna improve Chapel Hill Road? Because they committed to improving Chapel Hill Road, the subject from this site to Kings Island. So that'll have to be looked at. And then, obviously, the grading changes, and, and also any impacts, uh, or any impacts to the residents across the street, how that affects them positively or negatively. So, all that would have to get renewed, um, uh, by, by me at the right time. So, I couldn't say specifically, any specific location where the impacts of that seem the plan, um, but the, the currently, the site does drop off that way, and I indicated earlier, it drops off more significantly as you head towards Kings Island East. Um, but they have to address, and that's on their side, that's on their side.
Okay, then with that said, and with the ability to, in effect, correct or address any major change, reveal effects of the site, or any other calculations, we can come back to, you can come back to this board and say, we need to stop, we need to address this. Okay, with that said, then we are at the point where we will open to the public, public comment. Um, there's a lot of people here, I suspect there's a lot of people that would like to speak, which is funny. Just going to add, first of all, you get up, you get one try, uh, there's no do-overs, uh, or if you will, I forgot, I just wanna say one more thing. We've got way too many people in here. Um, second, I ask that everybody try not to be competitive. If somebody in front of you has said X, and made a point about X, there's no need, if you want, you can come up and say, I agree with the statements about X, thank you, sit down. Or you can come up and say, now, I'd like to talk about Y, or Z, or anything else, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off if we start to get into the same thing over and over again. The board hears it each time, the board refers to first line. Uh, okay, with that said, we're open for anyone that would like to, remember, this is the point in time where the public gets to comment about everything and anything that has to do with this application. Okay, it's open to the public. Yes, ma'am. Anybody who's been previously sworn, when they ask questions, you, you remain on the road, you don't have to be sworn, and so, I'm gonna, I, if I recognize the person or not, you've been sworn previously, right? Okay, just state your full name, please, for the record.
Mary Lynn Robinson, three oh one Chapel Hill Road. Um, I'd like to address, uh, the driveway issue, since I'm, the driveway is going across. Uh, first of all, I, uh, just wanna ask the board a question regarding procedure here. I'm going to be giving comments under oath to proposed plans that do not exist, so if I'm making, I, I haven't seen the real plans of where this is going. This is, they're surmising it's going to work, they're, they're planning to put it there. This is all very iffy, so I don't wanna say anything under oath that may be misconstrued as not telling the truth, when I don't have the evidence here to see it. Um, in my opinion, this, this driveway is probably the most important part of their entire design. This is not where they're gonna put their sign or a lamppost. This is the nucleus, this is the hub, this is where the traffic for five hundred students, their teachers, their parents, their friends, the residents of Chapel Hill neighborhood, and, and the hundreds of cars that are just gonna travel that road on a daily basis, this is where it's all going to converge, right, where, you know, wherever this driveway is supposed to go. And this has to be taken seriously, because if there's one thing that they can't kind of, well, we hope to get it over here, and maybe we'll adjust it over there, this has gotta be right, because people's lives are at stake. If, you know, if there's turns, if there's this, there's that, there's sightlines, you, in my opinion, you just can't kind of guess at it. We, we were trying to do everything, um, to make sure that we knew what was going on. We met with Mr. Greenspan, we met with Mr. Keating. Mr. Keating was at a loss for words because he couldn't, and rightfully so, he said, I can't make any comments when I don't have a plan. I, I haven't seen the plan, I don't know. A very cigar rail across the street from my house that goes approximately three hundred and thirty-five feet, maybe even more, and that guardrail is there to prevent people from going and, and the cars flipping off the road and turning upside down. And this is the grade they're talking about. Now, Mr. Keating said, engineering-wise, they can make some improvements, but they're extensive and they're expensive. And, and if anyone comes out to this property, that, you know, this is not a little hill, you know, this is something pretty detrimental to this plan. We're, we're not in Kansas, where everything is flat, so forty feet here is flat and forty feet there is flat. There are some major grade, grading issues, and, and hills and, and slope variances and all that other stuff that has to be considered. So, I, I really request that board weigh very heavily on making sure that this driveway is, is not good, but as perfect as we can get it, you mentioned, nothing's gonna be perfect, but this has gotta be, because all these cars, all this traffic is gonna converge twice daily at minimum here. And that doesn't include, you know, sporting games, or, or, you know, theater performances, or anything like that. Once, if, if this is approved and this driveway is not correct, it, it's going to affect not just the students or the residents, it's gonna affect Middletown Township and anybody who drives on that road. So this is something that really needs to have a great amount of thought. Um, I've lived at three oh one for over seventeen years, and I'm, I'm going to try to do my best to get you to understand what a day is like there. Um, this, I know it's not the applicant's job to prove the speed, but I can testify that speeders, I mean, I know the police are supposed to, uh, take care of that, and, but, but they don't. You know, I'm, I'm sure they do the best they, that they can with, you know, everything else they're dealing with, but people speed up and down, and we're not talking, you know, going from forty to forty-five, we're going from forty to sixty. They pass on the double line concept. Last May, um, there was an accident at Chapel Hill and Sleepy Hollow Road, two teenage boys. Luckily, they walked away, but their cars did not, they had to be towed. This is gonna happen again. This, I, I don't know if, you know, people believe in fate, or they think it's coincidence. I would take it as a warning, because if that's gonna happen with two teenage boys, imagine when you add a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty, two hundred other teenage drivers. We're, we're not, we're as concerned about their girls as we are about our residents. We don't want anyone to get hurt on that road. There are parts of Chapel Hill Road where literally, this much, a foot, will make a difference. And they might not be aware of it, because they don't travel that often, but I'm sure everybody on the board knows where I'm talking about. On, uh, two thirty-three, uh, at two thirty-three, traveling a little weird, that hairpin turn is, where everybody crashes into the, uh, to the wall there. On the opposite side are telephone poles. Now, they are within the regulated distance, but there's no curb there, and I measured. Some of those telephone poles with no curb are less than a foot to the road. When you go over to the bridge, going from Highway thirty-five, uh, Toucans Highway, and you go over that little bridge, about twenty-five to thirty feet after the bridge, the first telephone pole is in the road. There is literally three inches of blacktop. Now, the, I just wanna present it in, in this, a teenage driver. Now, she's not a bad girl, she's a wonderful girl, she's a great student, she, she doesn't text while she drives, she doesn't take phone calls while she drives. She's driving down that part of the road, and she gets distracted for a second. She, she has her favorite song, and she just turns that, and the wheel just does this, and that's all it's gonna take. And, and nobody wants to believe us, but this much, seriously, this much, could end up being deadly for people. As, we've seen it before, and everybody is, is saying, you know, the phrase, oh, this is just a case of not in my backyard. Well, if you're using that phrase, not in my backyard is, I don't want it near me, well, I, I have to readily admit, you are one hundred percent right, because let me tell you what was in my backyard. I watched them peel that car where the young boy died off that tree. I watched, my husband and I, day after day, the kids slept there, they literally slept there overnight. We sleep with our windows open. We would hear, there, we would wake up to two girls sitting on our lawn, sobbing uncontrollably. I, I hate to put it this way, you have beautiful, wonderful girls, if they were pulling your girl out of that park, you would not want this school here. We just don't want it to happen again. I used to bring bottles of water down to the kids that are there all the time, like I said, twenty-four seven, and, and we just, I feel, a decision just can't be made, like, okay, well, it's a conditional approval, and, you know, so we're gonna put the school in, good luck, everybody, let's have lunch, because it's going to change everybody's life, and somebody, this accident will happen again, and somebody has to be accountable. I mean, you know, I, if, if something did happen to one of these girls, and one of your daughters got hurt, and you're at the hospital, or even worse, home alone with that girl, and you're saying to yourself, why did this happen to her? And I know you have a dream, and, and I would want this for my daughter too. It's beautiful, it's wonderful, it's gonna be a great school, but the reason why you, it happened to her is because you didn't listen to us, and you put her there. The reason why it happened is because you guys are turning this school on a road that is just so dangerous, and that there are puddles, it floods, it's...
Okay, with that said, we're open for anyone who would like to... Remember, this is the point in time where the public gets to comment about everything and anything that has to do with this application. Okay. It's open to the public. Yes, ma'am. Anybody who's been previously sworn when they ask questions, you remain on the road, you don't have to be sworn. And so I'm gonna... If I recognize the person or not, because you've been sworn previously, right? Just state your full name, please, for the record.
Mary Lynn Robinson, 301 Chapel Hill Road. I'd like to address the driveway issue since I'm the driveway going across. First of all, I just want to ask the board a question regarding procedure here. I'm going to be giving comments under oath to proposed plans that do not exist. So if I'm making... I haven't seen the real plans of where this is going. This is... They're surmising it's going to work. They're planning to put it there. This is all very iffy, so I don't want to say anything under oath that may be misconstrued as not telling the truth when I don't have the evidence here to see it. In my opinion, this driveway is probably the most important part of their entire design. This is not where they're going to put their sign or a lamppost. This is the nucleus. This is the hub. This is where the traffic from 500 students, their teachers, their parents, their friends, the residents of Chapel Hill neighborhood, and the hundreds of cars that are just going to travel that road on a daily basis, this is where it's all going to converge, right where, you know, wherever this driveway is supposed to go. And this has to be taken seriously. Because if there's one thing that they can't kind of, well, we hope to get it over here and maybe we'll adjust it over there, this has got to be right. Because people's lives are at stake. If, you know, there's turns, there's this, there's that, there's sightlines. In my opinion, you just can't kind of guess at it. We were trying to do everything to make sure that we knew what was going on. We met with Mr. Greenspan. We met with Mr. Keedy. Mr. Keedy was at a loss for words because he couldn't, and rightfully so. He said, "I can't make any comments when I don't have a plan. I haven't seen the plan. I don't know." There is a guardrail across the street from my house that goes approximately 335 feet, maybe even more. And that guardrail is there to prevent people from going and for cars flipping off the road and turning upside down. And this is the grade they're talking about. Now, Mr. Keedy said, engineering-wise, they can make some improvements, but they're extensive and they're expensive. And if anyone comes out to this property, you know, this is not a little hill. You know, this is something pretty detrimental to this plan. We're not in Kansas where everything is flat. So 40 feet here is flat and 40 feet there is flat. There are some major grading issues and hills and slope variances and all that other stuff that has to be considered. So I really request that the board weigh very heavily on making sure that this driveway is not good, but as perfect as we can get it. You mentioned nothing's going to be perfect, but this has got to be. Because all these cars, all this traffic is going to converge twice daily at minimum here. And that doesn't include, you know, sporting games or, you know, theater performances or anything like that. Once, if this is approved and this driveway is not correct, it's going to affect not just the students or the residents, it's going to affect the Middletown Township and anybody who drives on that road. So this is something that really needs to have a great amount of thought. I've lived at 301 for over 17 years. And I'm going to try to do my best to get you to understand what a day is like there. This... I know it's not the applicant's job to prove the speed, but I can testify that speeders... I mean, I know the police are supposed to take care of that, but they don't. You know, I'm sure they do the best that they can with, you know, everything else they're dealing with. But people speed up and down. And we're not talking, you know, going from 40 to 45. We're going from 40 to 60. They pass on the double line concept. Last May, there was an accident at Chapel Hill and Sleepy Hollow Road. Two teenage boys. Luckily, they walked away, but their cars did not. They had to be towed. This is going to happen again. This... I don't know if, you know, people believe in fate or they think it's coincidence. I would take it as a warning. Because if that's going to happen with two teenage boys, imagine when you add 125, 150, 200 other teenage drivers. We're not... We're as concerned about their girls as we are about our residents. We don't want anyone to get hurt on that road. There are parts of Chapel Hill Road where literally this much, a foot, will make a difference. And they might not be aware of it because they don't travel that often. But I'm sure everybody on the board knows where I'm talking about. On 233, at 233 Travel, a little weird that a hairpin turn is where everybody crashes into the wall there. On the opposite side are telephone poles. Now, they are within the regulated distance, but there's no curb there, and I measured. Some of those telephone poles with no curb are less than a foot to the road. When you go over to the bridge going from Highway 35, Toucans Highway, and you go over that little bridge, about 25 to 30 feet after the bridge, the first telephone pole is in the road. There is literally three inches of blacktop. Now... The... I just want to present it in this... A teenage driver. Now, she's not a bad girl. She's a wonderful girl. She's a great student. She doesn't text while she drives. She doesn't take phone calls while she drives. She's driving down that part of the road, and she gets distracted for a second. She has her favorite song and she just turns that, and the wheel just does this. And that's all it's going to take. And nobody wants to believe us, but this much, seriously, this much, could end up being deadly for people. As we've seen it before, and everybody is saying, you know, the phrase, "Oh, this is just a case of 'not in my backyard.'" Well, if you're using the phrase "not in my backyard," it is "I don't want it near me." Well, I have to readily admit you are 100% right. Because let me tell you what was in my backyard. I watched them peel that car where the young boy died off that tree. I watched my husband and I, day after day, the kids slept there. They literally slept there overnight. We sleep with our windows open. We would hear... We would wake up to two girls sitting on our lawn sobbing uncontrollably. I hate to put it this way. You have beautiful, wonderful girls. If they were pulling your girl out of that park, you would not want this school here. We just don't want it to happen again. I used to bring bottles of water down to the kids that are there all the time. Like I said, 24/7. And we just... I feel a decision just can't be made, like, okay, well, it's a conditional approval, and, you know, so we're going to put this school in. Good luck, everybody. Let's have lunch. Because it's going to change everybody's life. And somebody... This accident will happen again, and somebody has to be accountable. I mean, you know, if something did happen to one of these girls and one of your daughters got hurt, and you're at the hospital, or even worse, home alone with that girl, and you're saying to yourself, "Why did this happen to her?" And I know you have a dream, and I would want this for my daughter, too. It's beautiful. It's wonderful. It's going to be a great school. But the reason why it happened to her is because you didn't listen to us and you put her there. The reason why it happened is because you guys are doing this all on a road that is just so dangerous. And there are puddles. It floods. It's icy, especially at 233. But all those telephone poles are... There's no drainage dip. There's constant ice in there. If you widen the road by where the proposed driveway is going to go, now, every summer, they drag race down there. We hear it constantly. And if you widen the road, they're just going to go faster and they're going to pass even more. And I can't stress it enough. It is going to happen again. And I just... I don't want to see it happen to anybody, whether it's Trinity Hall, whether it's us. But our lives are never going to be the same once this school is happening again. Or should this school be approved? And I'm just going to leave you with, you know, one thing. It never goes away. We think about what happens constantly. Every time we drive by that tree and there's new flowers there, it kills you. It just absolutely destroys you. And it was last... And as I said, it never goes away. Because last November, I was coming home from a function. It was probably about 1:30 in the morning. And I made the turn, and I was going down where it was... Nobody was on the road. And I was going down to where the road straightened out. And right before my house, I noticed something looked very odd. So I slowed down, and I will remember this for the rest of my life, seared in my mind. Two years later, sitting in front of that tree on the ground, looking down at the ground, was one boy holding a candle. It's an ad dress. I know it's pretty. I know it's where your dreams are going to go. Your girls are bright, wonderful young ladies. There's no magic arrow on Chapel Hill Road. Whatever prestige or importance you think that ad dress has, it's just an ad dress. Is it really that important to you that you will take that risk? Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
My name is Jeffrey Yaw. I live at 301 Drive. So my name is C.H.M.E.T.Z.
You've been previously sworn.
Yes, sir. I'm here this evening to voice my great concern over the Trinity Hall High School development proposed on Chapel Hill Road, and to request this board deny the application currently presented for minor subdivision and final major site approval as the applicant has not provided unequivocal evidence beyond a doubt that is in fully in compliance with the requirements of Section 16801 of the Township ordinance. According to the Township zoning tax, a conditional use which may be detrimental to safety, health, and the general welfare of the community must prove the design, arrangement, nature, or particular use such that the public's safety and welfare is protected and that reasonable consideration has been afforded to suitability, compatibility of existing neighborhood, the use of enough adversely impacted property values, adequacy of parking and traffic circulation, the need for such a facility where it's located, adequacy of proposed drainage, and so on. We've all heard what the requirements are of the zoning tax. In addition, the township zoning requires the environmental impact report company authorized on site plan application. The report must evaluate the effects of the proposed development will have on the environmental factors such as air quality, water quality, nor noise sewage capacity, and show how any adverse effect could be avoided or mitigated. The zoning places the burden solely on the applicant to prove without a doubt that the proposal will not be detrimental to the surrounding community. While a few of the above points that I just discussed have been touched upon or blazed on, it is my belief that this incredible burden has not been fully achieved without question in this specific case. We have seen in some instances, this evening as well, that the applicant's information is either wrong, outdated, incomplete, or in most cases thinly presented. After listening to the applicant's proposal and myself questioning the applicant's design professionals over the last several months, I do not believe the application and the environmental impact report submitted by the developers of Trinity Hall High School adequately prove the proposed plan will not be a detriment to the neighborhood or the health, self, safety, and welfare of the community. And this board has not been provided everything it needs to render a decision. In fact, I believe it's quite the contrary. If this development is allowed to move forward, it will be a permanent negative impact to the neighborhood and the surrounding community. And this board has not been given all the facts it needs to render a decision on the application. In one case, we heard the engineer of record was not even sure if who wrote the environmental impact report. In another instance, we heard testimony that the impact assumptions in the environmental impact report were based on old or non-site-specific data, such as the absence of the site-based percolation test to confirm adequate groundwater absorption. In other cases, there was a total absence of site-related data, such as the total sewage volume that the school will generate. And it is in point of fact that several of the extremely important topics still remain unanswered, even after the township engineer's third review of the applicant's plans. Specifically, in the case where the township engineer requested a groundwater modeling analysis, or in the case where the township engineer questioned the depth of the stormwater retention basin. These questions still remain unanswered. In addition, on several occasions, we heard testimony that the proposed development completely ignores the recommendations included in two major township planning documents, the McLeese Creek Planning Area Study and the Township of Middletown Master Plan. On several occasions, we heard testimony that the consultants had not read or referenced either document in their design. In terms of being a beneficial use to the surrounding community, I assert that this proposal will not be beneficial to the use of the surrounding community since it is a private, semi-philosophical school which will not contribute to the local tax base while unfairly adding stress to the local infrastructure, leaving the surrounding township residents to build a tax void. The applicant has stated in testimony that the school will rely on Middletown Township Police Spire and EMS service, but will not pay taxes and will not allow any community members to utilize their on-site facilities or sporting venues. The applicant has submitted no property value impact studies into the record to prove that there will not be a negative impact to surrounding property values. As we previously heard from the applicant's own accredited real estate professional, there have been documented specific cases where school construction negatively impacted property values. This board will never have the benefit of knowing whether with any certainty how this school construction will affect the surrounding property values as the applicant has failed to produce a site-specific report. It is not unreasonable to believe that the surrounding properties will somehow be affected as the construction of a private secondary school will eliminate the future possibility for construction of the land's highest, best, and most valuable use, which is single-family residential units. In terms of traffic conditions, Chapel Hill Road, while not originally planned as a major artery, has become a central cross-town thoroughfare over the last 30 years. Adding the volume that accompanies the normal and extracurricular activities of the secondary school will only further adversely impact traffic flow, volume, and safety. Chapel Hill Road is a now currently overutilized, rapidly declining roadway that at several locations reduces to points of no shoulder. Traffic consistently backs up at the Route 35 intersection at the west. And the intersection of Chapel Hill Road and Kings Highway is difficult to maneuver due to increased volume and very limited. Through testimony, we heard that the applicant only analyzed traffic count for one single day. They did not analyze the impacts that the developer would have on weekend traffic. And they did not analyze how the proposed traffic would impact the intersection of Chapel Hill Road and Route 35. It is very unfortunate that this board will never have the benefit of knowing how the proposed development will affect these three critical areas. The township engineer's third review of the applicant's plans noted that Chapel Hill Road and Kings Highway intersect at the intersection will experience a 42.9 second average delay per vehicle. And at the level of service at this intersection will decrease from its current Level B all the way down to a E rating as a result of Trinity's increased volume. The township engineer further recommended that the applicant should widen the northbound approach at this intersection and provide a separate lane to mitigate this degradation in operation. And thus far, the applicant has remained silent on the subject. The applicant is asking the board to render a major decision without all of the facts presented. The applicant is asking this board to take a leap of faith by approving the application when the applicant and plans are full of inaccuracies and incorrect information. The board cannot ignore all the negative impacts of allowing this proposal to proceed, nor can the board ignore the fact that the applicant has not proven without a doubt that the proposal will not be a detriment to the surrounding community and all the adverse impacts can be avoided and mitigated. The burden of proof rests solely with the applicant. And the applicant has remained content to align the fact that the application is simply variance-free, instead of proving that the proposal will not adversely affect the community. I speak for myself and several residents who could not attend this evening when I humbly request that this board deny this application and help us preserve and protect the community that we have worked so hard to build. Thank you.
The standard is not beyond all that. Without... I think the way you phrased it was... Without that. That's not the standard in the language, though. But I'm sure we'll get back to that at some point. Just, that is not the standard. That is not a criminal law.
Yes, by any means, please. And move the...
Is that right?
Yes. One second.
What was that?
Donna from Valencia. Three Arrow Headquarters. The length is of B-A-L-E-N-C-I-A. Three Arrow Headquarters. First, I'd like to thank the board for your time and your consideration of this application. I know that you're all volunteers, and it's been a lengthy application. And I know that there's a great weight on your shoulders that you consider the dangers that are presented to Chapel Hill, the people, the drivers, the houses. So I know it's a, you know, a great weight on your shoulders, and I know it hasn't been easy, so thank you. I have to start with some very serious concerns. And it revolves around the issue of the driveway's current placement and how it's currently planned. I have to say that we, as the public, have been put at a serious disadvantage not being able to consider a complete plan or as complete as is really truly possible. How can we hope to give a strong and accurate impact statement which fully explains the severity of this project's impact on our community when, as of today, the applicant has still failed to present to the board a complete application? And by that, I mean an application that shows where this driveway is going to be. They've had months of opportunities, and they've heard us say at several times that we think that the driveway's not where they indicated it. Every resident wins room, with the exception of the named objector, has a right to public statement. And the expectation is and always has been that the community was entitled to see a complete and properly-prepared plan before issuing an impact statement. Any testimony or evidence previously presented to the board regarding the critical access to the property was not only incomplete, but it's flawed and inaccurate. The issue of safety at the ingress and egress is a critical one. Case law has repeated that numerous times. The safety at the ingress and egress is a very critical issue. To leave it unresolved and deny us a chance to comment on this central issue is troubling to me. I think you're all familiar with Chapel Hill Road. Every few feet is a marked difference in width, in sight distance. I think that 60 feet on Chapel Hill Road is a huge difference in what you can see, how wide the road is. So to assess the safety of it at this point in time, it's a very difficult thing to do. And on Chapel Hill Road, every few feet can mean a difference between life and death. And we've seen that in the last two years, unfortunately. Secondly, I have some serious concerns about the limitations that were imposed upon the public during cross-examination. During the first hearing on January 22, 2014, Mr. Gorman, the attorney for the board, said that Trinity Hall met all the conditions and was a permitted youth. These are quotes from the transcript. Mr. Yachman-Machmas first, you just justified. A member of the public is accompanying across the applicant's witnesses, quoting the factors enumerated under 16801. Mr. Gorman replied, "Those general statements, even though they are within the ordinance, are not consistent with the law." He then stated, "We are not going to enforce them," referring to the factors outlined in 16801. Property values is not an issue, not a concern. It's right of the public. The board cannot consider that as part of its decision. I then went up and asked for clarification as to why 16801 does not apply. Mr. Gorman then informed me that only 16818 would apply. He has since made reference to the case that he feels controls the issue, which is Jackson Holdings LLC's distraction counter planning. In that case, the appellate division held that where a trial court believes the conditional use ordinance may be of questionable legality because it fails to provide clear and appertained standards to guide the decision of the board, it is incumbent upon the parties and the trial court to join the township governing body as a party to ascertain the validity of the conditional use ordinance. Never once does Jackson Holdings instruct the board to ignore portions of a standing ordinance. That is clearly not within the authority of the planning board attorney. The public was prevented from cross-examining the applicant's witnesses on any basis other than 16818. I, for one, would have loved to cross-examine them on some of the factors in 16801. With all due respect, I think that Mr. Gorman may have overstepped his authority, a municipality's legislative authority conferred on its governing body. What is most disconcerting to me is that it was inconsistent in the application of the law. When the objector appeared at the second hearing with an attorney, Mr. Gazioraski, he then was permitted to present the factors outlined in 16801. I agree with Mr. Gazioraski that 16801 applies. It doesn't make sense to me that only 16818 would apply. There's very minimal limitations and very little to consider concerning the safety and conditions of this surrounding location. In my humble opinion, the holding in Jackson does not mean that you cannot consider factors concerning this surrounding location. It simply stated that we need to look at a drastic criteria. Middletown's own legislature recognized in 16801 that conditional uses, such as the school, may become inimical to the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community if located without due consideration to existing conditions of the surrounding. Looking at the factors enumerated in 16801, I think it's clear that the property is not suitable with the needs of this school. Looking at compatibility, the simple fact that the property is located in an arminy zone does not mean it's compatible. You have to look to the language of the ordinance. Under the ordinance, you are first directed to see... You are directed to see first under 1601 that is zone for conditional use. After that, after you've confirmed that it's zone for conditional use, you are then directed to assess the factors from 16801 each. It is not compatible. The master plan of Middletown indicates as such, expressly as confirmed, that the area remains dedicated to buildings to be housed. I know other residents are going to explore this factor in more detail, so I'm going to move on. So looking to the potential impact on property values, I submit to you that I have read numerous empirical studies. That conclude that the negative externalities associated with the school outweigh the benefits. These benefits are usually acceptability to a neighborhood or local school. That benefit's not even present in this case. That benefit is not even present in this case. One such study prepared by two doctoral students at the University of Washington conducted a hedonic regression of home practice and concluded the following. The benefits from access to schools are outweighed by the negative effects associated with property values. Negative externalities associated with educational uses include noise and localized traffic congestion resulting in decreased property values. I have copies of that study available. Shall I?
No. Because that's expert testimony, someone's opinion, who's not you.
I would submit that since we were denied the opportunity to cross.
Can I, can I, if you're going to attack me, can I please say something? I think, you know, I think that the board has been extremely fair trying to manage an uncomfortable, long proceeding. Everybody wants everything exactly their way every time. Doesn't happen. Fact, I brought out the case of Jackson Holdings, which I went and researched. I will stand by what I said at the beginning. That ordinance is not easily enforced. That ordinance, Mr. Thomas said, it doesn't comport to the statute. I looked up Jackson Holdings, not them, not you. You're an attorney. You don't get it. That case said that if there's a lawsuit, a lawsuit, that the validity and enforcement of an ordinance like that has to be, they have to sue the township. This board has to deal with what's on the books, has to deal with what the ordinance said, and that ordinance, at least on page 10, does not comport to the statute. That's my opinion. Okay? So I stand by what I said, and if, you know, if you want to argue legal points, I'm ready.
In my opinion...
And I think that, you know, I would suggest you continue with your points rather than us having legal debates. I'm not that interested in it, and it fails for the board.
I submit that...
But if you want to attack me, I'm going to resist any further...
I disagree with your opinion, I don't feel attacked, but I do submit that if you do your self-awareness, that you're stuck to what's in the ordinance, I agree with that. You're stuck to what's in the ordinance.
Well, if you recall, when you read the transcript, I'm the one who said to everybody, "Did you read Jackson Hold?"
I do remember reading it up, and I certainly thought from day one until day five. Okay, so moving on, I'm looking at the potential for the creation of undue traffic hazards, and you know, we can go to the government building, you're not knowing the location, you can't find a location on the driveway, but that certainly makes it very difficult. Chapel Hill School of Intersections takes four steps. One of my biggest concerns is the intersection of Golden Drive and Chapel Hill. Again, we're not knowing how far this intersection is from where the driveway is going to end up. We have no clue. But I will tell you that today, as of today, there's a very limited sight of it. If you are at the stop sign on Lake Egan facing Chapel Hill, and you go right up King's Highway, you cannot see it far at all. I know that Mr. Mosent, the traffic expert, Mr. Littmeyer testified as to that type of thing, so I'm going to defer to his calculation. But once you have a bus, or even two buses queued up, you're not going to be able to see on how far. And I do have photos that I posted, I think, um... Do you think you can cut that into a picture?
Ken, I'm just looking to see where the last objector exhibit numbered was.
I believe, I believe the last exhibit was O-E. Objector P, which was sections 801 and 818 submitted, but with Mr. Thomas was testified. So I believe that's where it was. Oh, Bishop's... We're up there.
Well, more of this is open. But you're going to have to give it to Mr. Junko before it goes to the board, and if you have extra copies, before you give it to the board, just give it to us.
Sure, we have to go with you, but I can describe to you that, um, very briefly. The first is for him.
Yeah, I think you're going to have to let Mr. Junko...
Do you want to open them while I finish my presentation, and then...
No, I'll put it there.
Wow, my...
You're right, though. My notes reflect the O-E as the Bishop's Presbyth. With the Bishop's Presbyth.
Hey, y'all, here, what's this?
No, wait. At this point, all you can ask is, did you take them? What are they? That, that's... Did you take those pictures?
I did.
And they're pictures that we're watching.
They're pictures taken from an intersection of Golden Drive and Chapel Hill Avenue at the stop sign, and a picture, the first photo is...
And you took them yourself?
I took them myself.
And you took them recently?
Uh, did.
Oh, I mean, here's the foundation, then the order.
Shall I describe them for the record?
Microphone.
Microphone, we can't hear.
Shall I describe them for the record? May I?
You have extra copies for the board?
I hear they're being collated right now. They were just printed out.
Yeah.
But I have 12 copies. I'll just find them in order for everybody. The first photo...
Are you marking, there's a set of them?
There's a set, yes.
How many photos?
As I mark this exhibit, just as one exhibit.
We can mark them all as one set. Here's, O-nine will be...
A prediction.
Right, well, we just want to make five photos?
Five photos.
And then Mr. Junko has a copy. You have a copy?
As soon as I... As soon as I describe them, I'll get the back. The first photo is a photo without any traffic in it depicting the sight distance.
How long is this collation going to take? Because the board, listening to you and then getting the photos, is going to... Pictures are in front of us, and you're describing your best career. Otherwise, we're all going to be sitting here. Yeah, let's take notes, we'll take notes.
And I know they are.
Some of us worked out here, looking at that.
Yes. So the first photo is a photo at the corner of Lake Egan and Chapel Hill, taken from the stop sign that's located there, looking right up towards King's Highway East, and it depicts what you can see, the sight distance. Where I was taking the photo was even beyond the, you know, how you want like a crosswalk and you should stop and park there. I had to go even beyond that to get it. So it's beyond where it's parked, it legally permits to stop. So I went all the way up to the second line to take the photo. And the first photo, without any traffic in it, depicts the sight distance. Several other photos are taken with a school bus, waiting and queuing at where, of course, the last, the last minute of the driveway was going to be. Of course, not knowing where the driveway is going to be now, I think, obviously, this is a huge issue for us because in those pictures, you can see, one of those pictures has a car behind it. You're not going to be able to tell which one because you can't see the car. That's, you know, one of our most serious concerns, is that when you have a bus queued up there, there's oncoming traffic coming from King's Highway East, and a car waiting at Lake Egan to take a left turn, turn. You cannot see the cars. And I would submit, if this is the driveway that's going forward or the driveway that's going to be moved, we have a chance to comment upon that and have our own experts look to see the same serious issue that's presented here. Beyond the factors enumerated under 16801, I have serious concerns about the environmental implications of this project. In a February 2005 letter concerning the very property in question, the Middletown Environmental Commission wrote, and I quote, "This commission identifies this property as the headwaters to a tributary of the McLeese Creek. The McLeese Creek has been designated a Category 1 water in need of special protection. The Environmental Commission goes on to write, 'Riparian setbacks will be necessary along with water anti-degradation rules.'" I believe this letter is already submitted into evidence. I do have a copy of the board to carry for it.
Sir, any reports that the board received is within the file and is part of the application and the review process, but if we're not separately marking, you want to mark one separately, we can do that, but...
I just wanted to clarify, did you say a 2005 report?
It's the previous application of the exact same property.
Well, that we don't have. Sorry, I didn't catch that. Thank you.
I will provide it.
Excuse me, but what is the date of that report that was written?
The Environmental Commission has recognized there is a stream. Both Google Earth maps and Middletown's own tax map document the presence of a stream. Even this very board recognizes a stream. On page 31 of the January 22nd transcripts, a board member stated, "I remember it in 2008 when we walked the property. Although this DEP didn't indicate it, there is right now an active stream." He goes on to state, "The environmental board walked that whole area on Saturday," which I assume would be early January 2014. "There is a stream," he states. "Even if the NJDEP failed to identify a stream, there is a responsibility on this board and the Environmental Commission of Middletown to confer with the DEP and question that determination. We all have a responsibility to protect the McLeese and the Navisink, and we cannot ignore the reality despite the NJDEP's determination. How can we expect to protect the water if we don't even acknowledge it's there?" Next, I have some concerns about the registration that the applicant...
Can we have a copy of the environmental report?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, the letter from the Environmental...
Go ahead. Same letter, all three times.
It's a letter, it's a letter from Mr. Fidosh?
Yes. My understanding, who was writing it, has a representative of the Middletown Environmental I next have some concerns about the registration that the applicant produced at the last hearing. Under the terms of 16818, educational uses, uses private and or parochial elementary or secondary school duly licensed by the State of New Jersey, attendance at which is sufficient, attendance at which is sufficient compliance with the compulsory education requirements of the state may be permitted as a conditional use. We never received a copy of any license. The applicant's attorney argues that no such license is issued by the State of New Jersey and instead presented this board with a registration form. I have a copy of that, although it's already been submitted into evidence. I'd like to read from the registration form already marked into evidence. I'm not sure if the exhibit number is that was not provided to me.
I don't recall.
Okay.
The applicant submitted a packet, it was a couple different things, it was one, one piece of paper marked as required here. That's... Can you show that there's a junko before, excuse me, can you show that there's a junko before you start citing from it, just so we know it's the same?
And I think somebody on the, yourself or somebody else, asked for a copy of that during the past meeting from the board, and that was provided to either Mr. Valencia or somebody else, who read your mobile request or justice request. So what's just the date of that letter from, just identify the letter?
The letter is issued by the State of New Jersey Department of Education. It's dated June 6, 2012, and it's addressed to Ms. May Lee Clifford. May Lee Clifford. Should I spell it? M-I, M-A-I, R-E-D, last name Clifford, C-L-I-F-F-O-R-D. I'd like to read from the letter. Dear Ms. May Lee Clifford, this letter is to verify the registration of Trinity Hall with the NJDOE. Although the NJDOE does not accredit non-public schools, registration with the State Department of Education is encouraged. Registration does not imply approval, licensure, accreditation, or regulation of the non-public school by the NJDOE. Going back to 16818, it seems clear to me that educational uses, private and or parochial elementary schools, elementary or secondary schools duly licensed by the State of New Jersey. My question is the following: Why would the board assume that the legislator intended to mean registered instead of licensed or accredited? Many districts impose accreditation on conditional use by schools, including Englewood, Melbourne, Old Neck, Harding, New Jersey. In Harding, the New Jer, the conditional use statute for schools is section 225-175. That section reads, "An applicant seeking conditional use approval for a private school shall demonstrate that the school's educational program includes a full academic curriculum that is equivalent to that provided by public schools. Supporting evidence re-submitted by the applicant shall include copies of the duly adopted school charter, bylaws, and the board shall consider whether this school is accredited by a recognized school association or educational organization."
That's, that's a different matter. So the process in Middletown is that applications, before they come to this order to the zoning board, go through the zoning office. So as to that particular issue, that is something that the zoning officer looks at and directs it to the right board. And the zoning officer, I'm not sure if in every case writes a memo or report, or it's just kind of a process that's handed off to the board that she feels that is the appropriate board. I'm not sure, Jason, does she write a memo or not?
Typically, the zoning officer will receive the application for developments and indicate whether it can be approved administratively, and if not, what board it goes to, and when it is a conditional use, and she's satisfied that the conditional use standards under 1818 in this case will be satisfied. She was sent into the planning board for the measurable objective criteria that she needed, was applying to determine the appropriate decision.
So, and in this case here, there's no memorandum, just kind of the internal processing?
I think it was probably in a letter to the applicant saying, "I cannot administratively approve your application. If you wish to proceed, you will need a conditional use permit and site plan, and you should contact the board secretary to proceed to be further." That would probably be the extent of it.
I think that it's sent up to the, to the planning board to determine whether it meets the criteria of a conditional use, so that interpretation of that word would fall, I believe, on the planning board. Of course, I feel strongly, of course, that the, when you say licensure, it implies something stronger than registration. Of course, you know, you being licensed as an attorney, you had to go three years of law... school, two bar exams, and a great deal of work to register. All you have to do is submit your bar, copy of your bar results to your local bar examiner and, and write your name down, you're registered, voila. It's a big difference between licensure and registration. It's an analogy, but in this instance also, in the educational world, there is also a big difference. To move on, I wanted to talk about the need for this school. And I will tell you, I was confused as to what to look up for you guys. I didn't know whether to look up statistics regarding Catholic schools or independent schools. I really didn't know what to do, so I'm going to offer a few of both. Since 2001, ninety-seven of New Jersey's Catholic schools have closed. That's according to the National Catholic Education Association. If you go back further, the number is two hundred and eighty-two Catholic schools that have closed since nineteen seventy-one. Through enrollment at Catholic schools has dropped from two hundred and seventy-five hundred thousand students in six hundred and nine different Catholic schools in nineteen seventy-one to one hundred thousand, roughly one hundred and six thousand and three hundred and twenty-seven schools today. In recent years, our scientists revealed that a number of Catholic schools in the local area have closed. This includes Saint Anne's School in Heathford, Holy Family School in Hazlett, and Saint Joseph's School in Keyport. Onto independent private schools, because I'm not sure what we've classified this as. According to the U.S. Census Bureau's January 2013 paper called "The Decline of Private School Enrollment." The decline in private school enrollment is evident in both total numbers and the percent of enrolled students, and the percent of enrolled students in private school. While this phenomenon is marked nationally, it's also marked at the state level. In New Jersey, in 2008, private school enrollment was a hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one hundred. In 2009, that figure dropped to a hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-one. In 2010, that was the last year from which they published data. And recent New Jersey study, which I expect other members of the, of the public to comment on, expects to continue to decline. Having cited these statistics, I urge you to consider the fact that the school will not be serving our local community to any meaningful extent. They have publicly acknowledged that the students come from twenty-three different towns and multiple towns. Moving on, I have, I do have some concerns about some of the meetings that we held here in here this summer, whether or not they were completely open to the public. On several occasions, most notably the hearing on March nineteenth, two thousand four, numerous residents were prevented from entering the hearing room because of capacity concerns. Those people stuck in the hallway could not hear or see the proceedings. And I think that I can speak on my behalf. I was out there for a long period of time without being able to see or hear the proceedings, not even knowing, knowing what witness was up and what witness was not up. And I was ten minutes early. You know, other residents came in early or on time and were stuck out in the lobby as well. I truly believe that the planning board's bylaws say that it can exclude the, the public unless under certain situations was that, which that does not include. And I think every effort should have been made to have every meeting, one that we could hear everything.
Since that's first of the board, I think the board's done a remarkable job trying to accommodate it. The board's done what it can do. This room's a big room. The capacity's a hundred and seventy-five. There has been a fire marshal here to protect the public. If there were at times people stuck in the lobby, I was watching and I saw people go out to the bathroom, then they couldn't come back. I think that's what you referred to. At one point, people going outside, they couldn't come back in the room. But the fire marshal was doing her job. They didn't know, they weren't giving hall passes out. So I think that's an unfair criticism of things now, seven nights of somewhat protracted proceeding. And, and again, nothing's perfect. So, I mean, I, I think the board's done a very good job, and the fire marshal's done a great job, and the police officers who were here did a very good job, and the public on both sides have been very respectful of the whole process. So, you know, if you want perfection, just the wrong place.
The concern about access, and I did bring photos demonstrating at least thirty to forty people stuck in, in the lobby, and I hope.
I think it's stipulated of thirty to forty, I, fine, whatever. I'm not getting up, Jack.
There's photographic evidence that I would, I would like in the record if I can please permit it. Finally, the township committee has stated on numerous occasions that it won't find a dime to improve an inch of Chapel Hill Road. The applicant has offered, in my recollection, at least two different versions of what they were willing to improve. Last hearing, I've heard all the way down to the bridge, but I don't have the transcripts from last hearing, so I will just leave it at saying numerous versions of what was going to be repaved or improved by the applicant. Either way, I have another applicant question, who will repair and widen the remaining one and a half miles of Chapel Hill Road? What will happen to this road? And why are the residents, taxpaying citizens expected to accept a road that will deteriorate under distress of this project with no help from them or the township committee? I appreciate your time, I really do, and I appreciate you listening to my concerns.
Is there a picture of the overgrounding that you want to submit? You mentioned it.
March, March two thousand and fourteen hearing? It was about ten minutes after six P.M.
Sorry, what time?
Ten.
About ten P.M.?
It was before the meeting actually started. They were no longer permitted to enter at that point in time.
Well, that's because of a capacity issue.
Capacity issue, you're correct.
At six-ten, there might have been people coming in. We don't know that. I do recall that at least at one meeting, and I think both, everyone will stipulate on the record that it was at least one night when the fire marshal was limiting the number of people who could come into the room. He had deemed it to be a capacity. And that people had to wait till someone else left, including people who got up to go to the facilities or get a soda or drink a water or whatever. Again, that was one part of one night of, of seven meetings probably totaling somewhere approaching twenty-five to thirty hours. And whether that's a picture of that incident or not, I think it's stipulated there at some point, the fire marshal was limiting access to the room. So if, if that's an issue that somehow, if this proceeds at the court, the judge thinks that's appropriate to delve into, I think the parties will stipulate, Mr. Junko will stipulate. I mean, you know, and, and the fire marshal didn't, it's not the same gentleman who's here, he did his best. He didn't say, "Now what?"
It's going to be a big drop. I, I feel, I feel like a larger venue, I feel like you're.
How would this board know? How would we know?
On multiple occasions, residents went to the township committee meetings. We express concerns about the adequacy of the venue. We express concerns about the number of people attending. The township committee guaranteed us that they would speak to the planning board and urged them to consider larger venues precisely for this issue.
They did. Well, I have to tell you that without a fire marshal, there probably would have been all those people out there, would have been in the room. But since the concern, since the concern was addressed that the room was going to be overcrowded, nobody could ignore that. So it wasn't ignored. The, the way that then happens is the fire marshal did it. And it were, we were over capacity at one point. It's my legal opinion that there's no requirement in the State of New Jersey to have a room big enough to accomplish, to accommodate everybody who wants to get here. Because otherwise, all the meetings would have to be held at the metal gates.
Not trying to be argumentative, but the planning board bylaws have something to say about excluding the public and.
What they, I haven't, what they hear first. Excluding the public and not accommodating. I think, I think this is where the.
Yeah, I feel like if you're unable to hear or see, you don't really have meaningful access to it.
I think you, without, without debating what that means. Excluding the public means for executive session, to discuss litigation and things like that. It doesn't mean that everybody at every time has to fit in. I mean, the room looks pretty full now. We're still not at capacity. If we have a fire marshal, you know, everyone's in, there are people out in the lobby, but they choose to be out there for whatever reasons they aren't, whether they're talking or making a call or getting a drink of water or whatever they did. So I really don't think it's, I don't think it's an inferior issue that at one point, a limited point in this matter, some people were requested by, or told by the fire marshal to stay outside if the room's overcrowded. There are other competing concerns, fire safety being a major factor. So again, Mr. Lawrence, you're standing in front of an executive. You know, I mean, do we want the laws enforced to the letter of the law every time without everything?
I, I agree with you that, that there are more significant material.
Well, I mean, the fire marshal came up there and, and arguing about somebody standing in front of the door. I mean, you know, we have, you know what's perfect? People, I'll give you back to that. So if that's an issue, raise, whatever happens, it's an issue, judges might think it's more important than like.
Right. And I respect that and I'm ready to put it back. And I, I think that those are the, are the summary of my concerns. And I thank you again for all the time you guys.
Excuse me, before you leave, this particular shot, was the bus stopped or passing?
Stalled.
It was picking up?
No, it wasn't picking up. It was doing, it was stalled in the road. It wasn't moving. It's not in the picture of a bus.
Why was it stalled in the road?
To demonstrate.
Oh, you, you ordered the bus for demonstration purposes? Okay, thank you.
Did you previously testify? Do you want to?
I have not.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Give us your full name and address.
Lori Brand, three forty-five Chapel Hill Road.
Just where you testified about the board's tree pulting, something you got?
Thank you.
I'm here tonight as a twenty-year resident of the corner of King's Highway and Chapel Hill. I live at three forty-five. And my concern is with regard, obviously, to the traffic and hazard conditions that will be on that very corner. I know a lot has been said about the concern, everybody has the same concerns with regard to safety, with regard to traffic. So with all due respect to the board and everybody here tonight, I do not feel compelled to rehash that, but I do agree with Mrs. Robinson, unless you live on that corner or, or you live on that road, you don't see it and you don't know it necessarily like those of us that live there. So in that regard, as a twenty-year resident, I do feel, does that mean? I do feel like I would like some testimony on the record with my personal experience of living on that road, because that corner right now is a dangerous road at present without even extra traffic there. I also have a newly licensed seventeen-year-old daughter, and I can tell you honestly that I don't let her leave my house until I stand on the porch and watch her drive, because that T-interse, T-intersection is incredibly dangerous, because you, sometimes you just can't see. I mean, just coming here tonight, as I'm pulling out of my own driveway, I'm exiting on the chap, I, I have a driveway that goes onto King's Highway and Chapel Hill. I'm pulling out on the Chapel Hill side, I pull out on the Chapel Hill, I go up to King's Highway, and as I'm going to make my left to come to Borough Hall, I'm pulling out and a car speeds right up behind me, because he can't necessarily see me making that turn, nor because of the speeds that people already travel, he couldn't, we couldn't see each other. So point is, it's, it is a dangerous road. And again, as, living there twenty years, I've seen everything from fender benders to fatalities. And truth be told, had I known when I bought the house twenty years ago, I didn't have children, okay? Now, living there, I probably never would have bought the house. Point being, it, it is a dangerous intersection. The other thing that concerns me, and it's not, it's, it's, it's also a quality of life issue, okay? So it's certainly not anything with regard to hazardous, you know, the safety and the hazardous road conditions, but for those of us that have chosen to make our home on those very narrow roads of Chapel and King's Highway, it also does become somewhat of a quality of life issue, because I can tell you quite honestly now, at certain times of the day and or evening, that being rush hour in the morning and at night, there are times that I can't even get out of my own driveway, and I'm sitting in my own driveway for a good, sometimes two, two minutes, waiting for just the cars to keep passing, where I can sneak out onto the road. I'm an experienced driver of many years. A lot of these kids aren't, including my own daughter, okay? So again, just want to say that on the record. So with all due respect to the board, I would just respectfully request that in addition to considering the obvious, you know, traffic and safety hazards, that some consideration be given for the quality of life issue for those of us that have chosen to make our home on those very narrow roads of King's Highway East and Chapel Hill Road. Thank you.
My name is Janet Molicki, M-O-L-I-C-K-I, at the two oh five Geary Drive, G-E-A-R-Y Drive in Middletown.
Please raise your right hand. Just where there's some worry about the board, I'm hoping to hear what you got.
Quickly, all right, this proposed school would not be in my backyard, okay? It would be in my town. I have three sons, two drive, the third one will be driving in September. They've driven Chapel Hill Road, and it's very scary to me as a parent, the dangers that could be happening if this proposed school, excuse me, is built there. I come from Brooklyn, I've lived in Middletown for twenty years, I come from a place where every inch of land is built upon. And I moved here because every inch of land was not built. I want to keep this town beautiful the way it was, all right? And I don't want to see my taxes go up. I am concerned taxpayer, and I do not want to see a school that would not contribute to the taxpayers benefit from our services. Thank you very much.
Have not been sworn in. Sworn in, perhaps?
Did you keep your name and address?
David Scott, five speed power to drive.
Please raise your right hand. Just where it testified about the board's tree pulting, something you got?
Give me my name. I also have a daughter who's enrolled in Trinity Hall, so I'm a resident and a parent of a student. There have been a lot of comments, both positive and negative, about this application, about our school. I would like to make some comments in support of the Trinity Hall School and this application. All us in the community recognize that this is a long and extended hearing. Speaking for all of us on the state at this time, that you folks volunteer and support Middletown is admirable and most appreciated by those of us that support the application. I started the hearings on crutches, unable to walk, I had a knee replacement, and tonight I walk up here without any of those things, because I'm actually not a pro. I've spoke with colleagues, interested parents, and many supporters of Trinity Hall. In the interest of respecting the time already dedicated by the board to this matter, not wishing to lengthen the hearing more, my purpose is to speak on behalf of many supporters of the school. I'm sure those supporters would rise to speak to many of the same points that I would make in support of the application. Here to tell you Trinity Hall has great support in the community. First, I would like to address the application before the board and offer the following points. points. Application seeks approval as permitted use without barriers. The applicant has demonstrated the willingness to not only follow the letter of the law, but has also shown flexibility in accommodating the recommendations of the board and other constituents, not required by the school. Additional parking has been offered and provided into the plan and residents concerned about parking, overflow parking and related roads. Decision not to include outdoor speakers or sound generation for athletic events is taken off the table. The applicant has provided for enhanced landscaping, the upper joint property owners from the site, and traffic improvements included in the widening, widening and creation of turn lanes. An efficient and great educational opportunity offered, which I'm about to speak of, this is a very peaceful use of land on this, a very peaceful use of land on this site. Most of us live our lives with the benefit of experience and through this process, when I see signs with generic red circles and slashes to the words Trinity Hall, I feel compelled to share my family's experience with Trinity Hall. Why? Because Trinity Hall is more than two words on a sign, or two words in a newspaper article, or even the same word on the side of the school. As a parent of a student at Trinity Hall, I can assure the board the quality of education that students are receiving is of the highest quality. As a family and members of the community, we have lived and breathed the Trinity Hall experience. I am here to tell you Trinity Hall not only exists, but is also thriving. My wife and I have had very high educational expectations to succeed. We are continually impressed not just by the quality, but also by the consummate professionalism and dedication of Trinity Hall's administration and its teachers. Many of these administrators and teachers uprooted their families for the opportunity to contribute to the foundation and mission of Trinity Hall. All of these incredibly talented professionals departed secure jobs at well-established and reputable schools when they had the option and they did not have to. Passion that drove these fine people to their decision is the same passion that they bring to the classroom of Trinity Hall. Simply stated, Trinity Hall is working. Experienced teachers are teaching, eager and enterprising students are learning and excelling, and our seasoned, well-respected administration have their hands steady at the helm. I am most excited to testify to the outstanding young ladies of the inaugural class of Trinity Hall. My wife and I have been impressed and often inspired by these 30 young women who built Trinity Hall's temporary halls for last year. Pioneers, students, athletes, caring young ladies full of high spirit and quality character, eager to learn, contribute, and make a difference. I know that they have a good sense of what they are accomplishing during their short tenure at Trinity Hall, and I do as well. However, I don't think any of us will fully comprehend for years to come just how extraordinary the steps that these young ladies have taken. These young women I would want as my heirs. Our community should want them as neighbors, not just as students in the school next door, but in the future as professionals and community members raising families in the houses next doors. During expert witness testimony, I heard challenges to the credibility of Trinity Hall and whether there is appropriate demand. The inaugural class counts 30 enterprising young women as its members. Next year, the second class of Trinity Hall will be approximately 70% larger than the first class, and Trinity Hall received even more applications for admissions beyond the 70%. These numbers stand despite of no approval as yet for a permanent building for these young ladies to call on. I call that both need and mandatory. Um, I'm not sure I can present a exhibit, but I'm going to cite an article from Dr. John Chubb, who is the president of the National Association of Independent Schools.
Again, we get that same problem of, you know, whether Mr. Chubb is right or not, he's, he's not here.
Can I allow the focus to check? He's from...
Well, I don't know what he's gonna say. You know, if it's generic stuff, no big deal, but if you're saying that Mr. Chubb supports, it's, it's evidence that, Mr. Chubb's not here, you cross-examine. Hey, Mr. Chubb, did you really mean that? Did you mean this? So that's the problem with handing in reports from somebody else.
I, I simply wanted to...
Why don't you say what Mr. Chubb or Dr. Chubb said, but make it your words, not his words, and then we can just move on?
Don't read it.
Because otherwise, we're gonna, I mean, Mr. Gazrasky's gonna jump up to object with Dr. or Mr. Chubb.
I'm ready. Um, Dr. Chubb recently, and as I said, he's the president of the National Association of Independent Schools, um, not New Jersey, but the board. Dr. Chubb recently visited Trinity Hall and, and writings of his articles based on his day having spent at the school.
Yeah, we're going down that, we're going down that road. Before Mr. Gazrasky speaks, he can't, he cannot read into the record what Dr. Chubb or Mr. Chubb said about his business. He's not here.
Another, I can't say anything about Dr. Chubb. I just want to...
I don't know. What you can't do is read what he said. That's what you can't do. You can't say Dr. Chubb visited and said, "It's the greatest experience I've ever seen." You know, you can't say, because he's not here, you cross-examine. Okay? I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to make this complicated. You cannot read his words.
I didn't, I didn't think that happened.
Um, anyway, what you said, anyway, you're...
It's not important, someone else's words, just like yours. Here is a highly educated and credentialed educator who...
That's not, that's not. I mean, I'm not trying, I'm not trying...
I'm happy to, I'm happy to...
I'm not trying to give you a hard time. The testimony that Mr. or Dr. Chubb gave to this board, if he were here, cannot be made through you.
Okay, I'm happy to...
Okay, listen, could I?
Um, beyond the benefits to the families currently involved with Trinity Hall today, as well as those soon benefit as their daughters would trickle in the honor, our community will benefit as well. Oakdale School and Kent Place School in South New Jersey are but two similar examples of how single gender schools have peacefully and successfully coexisted within the same community and the same that they share with their residential neighborhood. The only advantage that they have over Trinity Hall is time. They have just been at it longer, they just did it earlier. This is a great opportunity to use a particularly attractive piece of land in a very unique way. Casefully designed campus, carefully and thoughtfully integrated into over 68 of us. And yet, another educational institution sharing a neighborhood in Middletown as approximately 23 of our 25 schools in town already do. As I understand, and I could do a statement, I'm under oath, my, my understanding is that 23 of the approximately 25 schools are in residential zoning.
I'm not alone. You gotta stop the commentary back there, okay? When, when you're giving testimony, bear quiet. You have to have that same respect, please.
Thank you. As members of the community currently building Trinity Hall, we know better than most people that this educational opportunity will benefit our daughters who currently attend, but more importantly, we recognize the benefit to the future students and the future families of our community for years to come. In summary, I would like to reiterate what a great opportunity this is for the community, fill a void that's been absent from our area for far too long, an attractive addition to the great township of Middletown, another reason among many others for people to view our great town and a positive life. School is a permitted use in the R90 zone. There is no barriers. Applicant is flexible and addresses issues raised by the board. The use of the land as an educational institution is inherently beneficial use for the community, and students will benefit from the challenging curriculum and educational experiences at a single set secondary education office. In closing, I ask each of you to vote yes and grant approval for the Trinity Hall application. I will thank you both for your time and for your service.
Have you spoken before?
Yes.
Just your name, please.
I'm Tariya, 605 Drive, Little Town. You have a point drive? Yes, between Kanachian and Leacon. And, um, so as I stated, I'm a resident of Chapel Hill, and I'm here to talk about the Trinity Hall feasibility study and report from the U.S. Census Bureau issued in January 2013 titled "The Defying in Private School Enrollment." In numerous publications, Trinity Hall has stated demand for this type of...
Can't hear you. If this something's already been marked?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah, for sure, okay, that wasn't, that wasn't clear, so...
My lawyer, uh, report?
Was this, this...
Yeah, my lawyer's consultant's report?
One at a time should be... Okay, we have to go check, so let me take a second. If you can tell us what, where, and how, we'll find it.
Actually, we were sent a new document to, uh, to Mr. Thomas testified, basically all the information which was presented was taken from them referring to...
Look, that isn't, you might all stop, you're not, 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 stop. So just look, if you're not gonna tell us where it is and what number it is, then we're gonna have to go find it. Everybody knows what it gives a hint, then it goes. If not, we'll...
It looks like that.
Yeah, well, okay, what time, what exhibit number?
That was the last meeting.
That's the last meeting, because I remember because...
I know the person.
Okay, it's, we have, we have it, it's marked as 06, it was from... All right, so it's in the record already as 06. So there, so the objection that Mr. Junko was gonna have about you referring to a document, it's not relevant because it's already in the record.
Again, I misunderstood, I put there's reference to a census report. And you're saying you're taking that as a part of what is in the, uh, 08?
Uh, I was gonna return to a couple of points in that census, in the census.
Okay, 06 in the transcript is referred to as the feasibility study. I believe it's a feasibility study that Mr. Thomas found online or otherwise and presented it at, during his testimony.
That's 06.
That's 06.
In a way, it's a census report.
Wait, I'm out. 06 is the census report. 08 is the press needs for the business. 06 is that document. Can we agree on that?
My, my objection was to this census.
I don't know, it was yours it is.
Well, so, all right, Mr. Davis, Hannity, and I have a nod here, this is Will and Mike.
So the Michael consultant's report, October 2011, was identified and marked as 06. Did, are you citing from that?
Yes.
Where?
From the Bible report? Uh...
Citing?
Or the number of points in this thing that you're quoting.
Okay, so if you want to say something that is in here or refer to this, that's okay. But if you're gonna refer to other documents, those other documents have to be properly before the board.
So you're gonna draw a list, you're gonna show on the U.S. Census Bureau, what's on your list? They're not before the board.
Okay, wait, I'm out, I'm out. But, U.S. Census reports are government reports, and generally then, a board could recognize a copy of a government report. You could recognize a copy of census data. I would suggest that if there's a copy of census data that you want the board to see, that would be marked, given to the attorney, and then you could refer to it because that's a government report and that's not something that, you know, somebody else said, this is an official government report. If you want to do that, I think that would be problematic, but we need to have copies of it, not just read from it.
I only have one copy of it, so...
Well, one copy will do.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, one copy's okay.
Okay.
So, as I try to do some housekeeping, why don't you show that to Mr. Junko? We would be at 012 if we were gonna want... Wait, wait, wait. All right, Mr. Junko, you're looking at, right?
Yeah. I'm stuck on the front page, and, and it says S-E-H-S-B, worky paper. It's prepared by, it's Stephanie Urick. It has a, does it have, it has a reference on the bottom, it says, "This report is released to inform interested parties ongoing research and to encourage discussion of work in progress. The views expressed on statistical or methodological issues are those of the authors and not necessarily those of the Census Bureau."
Yeah, so if you, not, not to delay the boy with this, but do you want a copy, no, I just get that, do you want a copy of something that said, "U.S. Census Bureau"?
That's right. That's why I'm just, I think the papers are like, that's what it is. The title is, I'm surprised, or, you guys, the microphone, please.
Right, so, that's always the best. Uh, the, the document reads that declined in public, Brighton School of enrollment refers to the author refers to the date, and then it says, "U.S. Census Bureau, social, economic, and housing statistics." That's what it says.
Let me see, let me... I gotta tell you, man, just looking at the, without looking inside, but the, the, on the caption, it says, "The views expressed," as Mr. Junko said, "for those of the authors and not necessarily those of the U.S. Census Bureau." I think that makes it not, it may be on file someplace, but it's not a government record or government document. It's, it's somebody who has written a report, so I would think that that would be problematic. My advice to the board would be that that document itself shouldn't properly be approved.
I have another question. Is this gentleman one of your colleagues?
He's just trying to help out. So he's a nice guy.
Sure, we'll be saying to the next Trinity witness.
I'm sorry.
Okay, guys, well, I'm sorry, you can, you can kinda say what's in there without saying "they said," if you know what I mean. But you can't...
I'll try.
Okay, can we give him back his report?
Yeah.
So 012 was not been marked. That'll be the next...
Right.
It's not been marked, that'll be the next. So, all right, so the reason why I'm calling the Trinity Hall feasibility study is that in numerous publications, Trinity Hall has stated that demand for that type of education was validated by a comprehensive feasibility study. However, I think that there are a number of issues noted in the feasibility hall study that causes made and should cause...
that causes may and should cause the board to have great concern. One point is that, that study, they sent out over 11,000 surveys, and they stated that, or the study stated that the respondents to the survey will tend to favor persons interested in the school. They only got back 18% of the survey, and only 7% that they got back were, or 7% that were sent out to CBA alumni, who Trinity Hall keeps doing a comparison with, responded to it. And only 3% of the St. Mary's population responded to it. So, to me, I don't think that, that's one point where the feasibility study, you know, it does not support the school being here. On another point, many in the focus group pointed out that the proposed school does not have a proven track record and would need to establish its success and reputation. For some parents proving itself would be a pretty white present for them to enroll their daughters in the school. Another point that was brought out was the population of families with children in Monmouth County. The decline of the past decade had a higher rate than that of the state in the largest growth area, you know, where the wood being in, uh, an increase would be in western Monmouth County. So, why is a school in the eastern part of the county? Going on, it said that the female population in Monmouth County ages 15 to 19 is expected to decline as much as 16% from 2008 to 2028. I tried to get more recent statistics on it, but there weren't none from the Census Bureau or from the New Jersey Department of Labor that I could find. In the survey, the respondents stated that on choosing a high school for their girls, Catholic faith instruction, the values and morals was not even in the top 10 of important factors, and single-sex education was last on that list of reasons why they would choose a school. In the enrollment potential and inclusion section, the proposed cost to attend the academy will pose a challenge for many family, families, and funding will be necessary to make the school affordable. So, where the enrollment potential from the survey said that in year one, they would have 79 students. For year one, they only had 30 students. So they only achieved 38% of their projections. In year two, while they said that they've increased the number of students in the, uh, in the freshman class to about 50, okay? I mean, you know, that represents less than 53% of their projections. They projected having 152 students in the second year. So, you know, I think based on their own survey, you know, and the feasibility for the school, I don't see it being, you know, a viable institution. Another point, and unfortunately I don't have it, is, Ronson Day School had an article in the paper and saying, you know, where their graduating students were going to, no graduating students were going to Trinity Hall. So in closing, I would ask the board to really take into account Trinity Hall's own study and vote no. Thank you for your time.
Have you been up to court, sir?
Uh, yes, I've been sworn a few months ago. Um, Chris Whalen, W-H-A-L-E-N, around 14 Sleepy Hollow Road. Um, I just wanna comment, uh, the gentleman spoke twice before me, the gentleman representing Trinity, and I really thought that summarized everything here perfectly. I couldn't have wanted something better in a capsule like what we've all been through. Um, he displayed their desire for this, for their families. They really want it, I understand that, but expressed zero tangible benefit for our community. Nothing. I think coexistence of a future school potentially was a good thing. So I really think that sums it up for me, um, and the board should really consider that. Um, you know, because there is no tangible benefit. If there was, and they could find one, they would broadcast it on all their shirts and anywhere they could go. There were zero words from that gentleman on the increased danger to our children. At least acknowledge it, at least Trinity moms. He represents you, and I won't mention at least the danger to our children and how you feel about it. Just monotone infomercial. If I was gonna, wanted a school like yours, I would definitely sign up tomorrow, but it's not the... Oh, no, this is very important.
Hold it, hold it, it's there.
Okay. What we're looking for, excellent, we love it.
We need to address the board.
Wait, wait, the board. You're addressing the board, not the back, and you're, let's not have the theatrics.
No. You can't, this is not about going and saying what that other person said was wrong. Because we could do that all night. This is facts, testimony, your opinion, and if you disagree, that's fine. You don't have to get up and say it.
Didn't say he was wrong, just said he hominemed it.
Well, I think as a general rule, going back and forth criticizing each other is not gonna be relevant. So try to say what you wanna say without saying, you know, trying to criticize the testimony of somebody else.
Okay. In the late 90s, I moved my family to this community, Cooper Road down on Sleepy Hollow Road. My family's move was well-planned, and it was made for all of the, all of the things about the community that we're trying to save. This amazing community and neighborhood has been centuries in the making. Trinity Hall is a commercial enterprise and will bring to our neighborhood all of the communal, societal, and environmental harm that such enterprises do. Chapel Hill Road has no lights currently. It flows for our community. Installation of one light will be an unnecessary blade on the landscape. It will cause backups and congestion, and we've heard this before, pollution, whether currently is none.
It's a slowdown.
Okay.
Slow down a little bit. Or quarter, you're only worth a half.
So the reality of traffic, you know, we talked about it. There's 250 teenage drivers possibly traveling down Chapel Hill Road twice daily. This sentence should give nightmares to all of us. It's been giving me nightmares every day for all the stories we've heard. And I live two houses in from Chapel Hill Road. I'm also a business owner on Oak Hill Road, so I'll be fully affected by the traffic most likely double. So all of these will increase the possible death and injury to the children and adults of our community. And I've been a CPA for almost 25 years, specializing in commercial transactions. And I believe Trinity Hall Development will decrease the land values surrounding it dramatically, financially devastating families already heart-hit by the downturn of the real estate markets the past six years.
Slow it.
Money will be taken and increased taxes from our students' parent savings for possible construction projects, and increased police and fire protection services forever. We'll have zero responsibility for possible multimillion dollar improvements that will be necessary now and ad infinitum. These funds should be going towards our students' education and not funding the education of strangers who are not contributing to our community directly. How easy will it be to sell our homes after Trinity is built, knowing that such a potential and unknown tax liability lies in wait for the new homeowners? Possibly not very easy. Not knowing how to sell a house in Chapel Hill Road when some large improvement could come unknowing environmental or otherwise that we need to foot the bill for. There are enough private schools in the area. People have done with the statistics to service the needs of our community. That's our community. Um, from a simple zoning perspective and planning perspective alone, it should be rejected, as I think there's ample township real estate dedicated to the business purpose of education. There are zero positives and benefits to the residents of this community from this project. This is overwhelming and devastating harm that will be irreversible and permanent if it goes through. So every vote should be no, in my opinion. For all the harm it will bring, only if there was a true and incontestable direct community need for such a large commercial operation in the heart of our neighborhood should such a land, family, and way-of-life-altering project be considered. That is the only reason. If we decided as a community to alter our entire neighborhood and community and bear these terrible consequences, then and only then, should it even be considered. This is clearly not the case, the opposite is true. People coming from the outside with money proposing such a, such a mass commercial operation really should not, should hopefully be driven out of town by the board. Your yes vote will set in motion events that will lead to increased injury to our citizens. Your yes vote will dramatically alter our community forever, and your yes vote may not be in the best interest of the community. As a father of children, the community and employer, you do the right thing for us or community, and please vote no. Thank you.
There are people in the hall, and the Fire Marshal is not indicating their capacity. So we don't want any, you know, we don't want the implication of excluding anybody. So either they come in or not, but if they choose to be out there, it's their choice. You have three seats right in front. If anybody wants to come in right in front here, I have three. Have you been up to court?
I have, yes.
Is your name in here presently?
Here in Austin, line Blueberry Lane. I'm a lifelong resident of Middletown, and I'm very concerned about the impact that Trinity Hall will have on the historical nature of our area. Um, if you consult the Middletown Township website, which I don't know if you want a copy, I printed it out, you can get an idea of the history of Chapel Hill Historic District. It states, "The district comprises approximately 17 buildings clustered along Kings Highway East between Chapel Hill Road and Stillwell Road." It goes on to say, "The district itself is relatively free from intrusions."
Well, Mr. Junko has said it wasn't picked up on the record, that it's not within the historic district.
I bet, I have that going forward. But this is from the Middletown website, so...
Is there any objection to... Either the document or reading from documents that are on the township website?
No.
So, can I, anybody who's gonna read, just for the benefit of the court reporter, when you wanna make sure the court reporter can take down everything you're saying, and I haven't seen myself talk fast, but you talk, when you read, you talk too fast, and it's very hard for the court. So we have to slow it down. If you're gonna read, you have to slow it down a little. And so, the objection is... Mr. Junko has said it's not an historic district, but I think that's been established in the record. So would that provide a...
Well, it's definitely, you know, discussion there of Trinity Hall being in the historic district.
Okay.
Hi, I'm going on just...
I'm sorry, go.
Okay. Um, this, the district's website is itself relatively free from intrusion. Lands around the district have recently been subdivided and are being developed residentially. This will not remain if Trinity Hall is permitted to build on proposed land. While I understand the land they built, well, built on is not a registered landmark or historical, the area is around it closely, or surrounding it is. Increased traffic on Kings Highway East, where there are homes very close to the road, will be extremely detrimental to our town's history, which we're proudly celebrating this year for its 350th anniversary. In closing, I would like to read to you a bit more from the article on Chapel Hill's history from the Middletown website. "The Chapel Hill Historic District possesses integrity of location, setting, and association. It has a particular historic significance to Middletown Township by reflecting the broad cultural, political, economic, and social history of the nation, the state, and the community. As a first-grade teacher, I urge you to keep this in mind when making your decision. I want this history to be here for my students as well as the next students to come. Thank you for your time."
Please, your name and address.
Melanie Elmiger, 43, Green Tree Terrace, Lynn Croft.
Tell your last name, please.
E.L.M.I.G.E.R.
Great question, Beth, with the board, the truth, oh, she's gonna go through something, God. You're gonna have to, if you don't want...
Try to get close, okay.
That ain't gonna...
Shorter.
You say Lynn Croft as well.
Lynn Croft, yes. My name is Melanie Elmiger. I live on Green Tree Terrace in Lynn Croft, right next to Christian Brothers Academy off of Route 520, Newman Springs Road. I'm here tonight to offer a different perspective on the Trinity Hall development by demonstrating with a concrete comparison how it can bring a positive change to the community. In Lynn Croft, we have a perfect example of a private high school living in great harmony with the neighborhood. I have lived next door to CBA for the last, the past 18 years, and my family and I have greatly benefited from the entertainment and enrichment opportunities that have been provided there. Sports camps and events, art shows, craft shows, plays, just to name a few things. This school, with its many positive aspects and its dynamic environment, have been of great value to me personally. It has certainly increased the value of my home, and even more, has provided great value to the community. And that's what a reputable educational establishment can do for a community. And my expectation would be that Trinity Hall would follow that model. I've heard about the Trinity Hall neighbors' safety concerns and quality of life issues. I'm a mother of three children, so much of my time is spent exiting and entering my street adjacent to CBA for the many pickups and drop-offs required for school and other activities. Although I have the benefit of choosing to access 520 at a traffic light at one end of my street, most days I choose to exit my street by the stop sign and turn left past CBA toward downtown Lynn Croft, even despite Route 520's 40 mile-per-hour speed limit that is often exceeded. For about 15 minutes... For about 15 minutes each morning and each afternoon, and I can tell you exactly, it would be 7:55 a.m. to 8:10 a.m. and 2:30 p.m. to 2:45 p.m. I might have to wait a minute at the stop sign, but the traffic is never so handicapping that I feel stranded or in danger. This minor inconvenience only happens for eight months out of the year. In fact, despite the heavy travel of 520 in this area, the curve of the road about 50 feet past my street, and the added traffic of Brookdale Community College nearby, there have been very few accidents over the past 18 years. And I would estimate that there are many more inexperienced drivers on this stretch of roadway than in most every other area of Middletown due to the conversions, due to the conversions at a high school and a college. I know my CBA neighbor very well, and I've embraced this neighbor. And in turn, this neighbor has respected me and has been attentive to any impact they may have on my quality of life. For examples, when students were parking on my street or speeding down my street, the administration told me I just had to provide license plates, and the situation was remedied. In the same manner, I would expect Trinity's Hall's administration to act responsibly for the safety of the students and residents and address any safety concerns involving the students driving to campus. The students at CBA have engaged in thousands upon thousands of hours of community service that have benefited our community. I would expect the same from the students at Trinity Hall. To be fair, I became CBA's neighbor by choice, and the Chapel Hill neighbors did not choose Trinity Hall as their neighbor. And if today the 157 acres of CBA were wooded and pristine, and Green Tree Terrace held the horse farms of its racing day fame, I absolutely would be speaking out against the development of the Christian Brothers School for three reasons that this planning board can't consider in this case at hand. One, I wouldn't want change. Two, I would fear the unknown impact it would have. And three, I would not trust that the decision, I would not trust the decision-makers to act in the best interest of the community, because in Middletown, we have many, many examples of the opposite. However, and this is my point here, we have the benefit of hindsight in the Trinity Hall development by comparing it to CBA. We have a success story in our midst, a beautiful school that not only adds to the value of our town, but it defines it. Will Trinity Hall be like the CBA I have described? I hope so. More importantly, it seems Trinity Hall hopes so. But collaboration and transparency are the key. I don't have a personal interest or investment in whether or not the Trinity Hall application is approved, but I do have an interest, as a Middletown resident and a taxpayer, that the rules established by our land use laws are followed by both the applicant and this board, that the rules established by our land use laws are followed by both the applicant and this board, and that the plan is a good, sensible, conforming plan. And that the plan is not denied without a just reason which would lead to an expensive lawsuit. If this planning board, the zoning board, and the township committee can promise the Chapel Hill neighbors that they will protect them from the politics that have played a part in this, then I'm hopeful that the Trinity Hall development can become a great example of how a town, a school, and the affected neighbors can work together. I'm optimistic that time will prove that the benefits of having Trinity Hall in Middletown will far outweigh any negative impact to the community. Thank you.
He testified previously.
I did.
Did your name and address, please?
Yes, it's Patrick Short, Six Carriage Drive in Middletown. There are two primary reasons that are driving my opposition to this school. Not because of.
Microphone, please.
It's not because of that.
He's got the lady for you. Put it down, please. Just put it up.
He's short. That's him, short.
He's not.
I think there's two driving reasons, primary reasons why I'm in opposition to this school. It's not because of it's a school, it's because of the location of the school that's being proposed. It's going into a community that's already developed, somewhat backwards. Schools go into a community as the community is being developed, not going into an existing community that causes the quality and character of life to change. Second reason is the value, and the value's got to be questioned. What a nonprofit school provides to Middletown as a whole. Those are the two primary factors that drive my opposition. My wife often says that the best engineers are women. Women make the best engineering. And her rationale, particularly if they have children, is because they provide practical application and experience to their design. And when I was listening to the traffic engineer, I was seeing that some of that practical application and thought was certainly missing. When I listened to him and then had an opportunity to question his engineering and his design and his analysis, I specifically asked about the construction vehicles coming into the site, the size, how much material they would carry, the routes that they would take. I did not ask those questions because I knew the answer that the impact would be in a certain amount of time when the construction was being built. I understood that. I understood that it was a certain point in time it caused disruption with its building phase one and when it was going to be built phase two. But it was an important thing to bring out that there would be disruption of these heavy vehicles. But it was the fact of a certain question that I asked about the route that the truck would take in order to get to the site. They'd take 35 and then either come Chapel Hill Road or they'd come up East King's Highway and turn down Chapel Hill and enter the site. And I asked, would there be any impact of these heavy vehicles moving up those routes? And would either route have an impact? Would the truck carrying that load have an impact? And the engineer said no. Said no. We know as a fact of living here in the community that indeed they would. A truck as big as a fire engine driving up East King's Highway would indeed have impact turning into Chapel Hill Road or onto Chapel Hill Road. That immediately I lost confidence in that engineering design. Practical thought and application, and it quickly surmised to me that he did desktop engineering. Desktop engineering didn't feel the community, hadn't walked the terrain, or did a clear understanding of what impact that would have. And his design and his answers showed that as true. Why wouldn't practical thinking question the impact that that have on intersections along the corner of Route 35? The Navasink Road, the Chapel Hill Road. We all go out to Whole Foods and we know that traffic is a problem now. Why would we not think that that traffic would not increase if we have a school that the only route is Chapel Hill Road in that intersection? Unless they go to King's Highway, which is a terrible route, route to take, and you cannot, or you have difficulty turning on Sleepy Hollow as well as Chapel Hill Road. Why wasn't that taken into consideration? And I would think that practical application and experience would come into the design and taken that as consideration. The timing that traffic would go. You look at the traffic into his design, and it was at set periods through one day. I would argue that more modeling with other schools would result in a different opinion. Modeling, say, CBA, modeling RBC, modeling Rumsen County Day. You can see the traffic that goes in and out of those facilities any given point in time of day. You'll have traffic in the morning, you will have traffic at the end of the school day, but you will have traffic during the day and most particularly after the school hours. And why did the traffic engineer did not consider the sporting events or the type of sports that would take place after the school hour? We know that sporting events after school hours can bring as much traffic and congestion into the area as the school during the school hours. So I listened to the traffic engineer, I listened to his design, but the practical application engineering was, made it a short-term design. And I'd ask you at least to take that in consideration, a stomach of short points that was not considered in that design. The second point that I'd like to make is the value. What value does a nonprofit school provide Middletown? If it has so much value, why isn't it being built in other areas? Why isn't it being built in Rumsen? I would argue that maybe Rumsen doesn't have the open space, the sizable lots to build such structure. And Middletown does. And Middletown, open space is a precious commodity, a precious commodity that has value. And we have that, and that's why people want to come into Middletown. Because we have that precious commodity of open space. Why wasn't this school built at Fort Monmouth? What value could that have provided? They had the facility, they have the student classroom, they have the sporting field. They even have a kitchen and a cafeteria that's already built. Well, I would argue that Oceanport, Titten Falls, and Eaton Town looked at the precious commodity of their facility and said a nonprofit school coming in here did not provide the value of other tenants would provide. So I would say, why Middletown? Why Middletown? What value does that provide us? We, I believe this board has approved 19 resident homes, if not 20, on this exact same property. A value, precious commodity, what value would bring versus a school nonprofit versus a housing developer? A school going into a location that's already developed does not fit. Houses that would go into an existing area that could fit by the land, land use, fit in the sense that it's low density, sizable lots with minimum impact to the existing infrastructure. And the value of a sizable lot, 19 to 20 homes, $20,000 or more in property tax, times 20, 400K a year, and if you live in Middletown, more than 400 the second year, more than third. But I'm saying that is the value. It's a precious commodity. It does not fit. It does not fit in this location that's already built. It does not fit because it does not provide value back to Middletown where other houses that's already been approved would. And I would ask this board to consider those factors when they're making your decision. Thank you very much.
Yes, I'm not.
Your name and address?
Susan Mehan, M.E.E.H.A.N., 12 Sir Anthony Drive, Middletown.
Please raise your right hand. Court testimony about the word dispute, I'll do something to God.
Yes, I did. My husband and I lived in Middletown for the past 20 years. We live about a mile and a half away from the post site. I am a public school teacher, and as such, I very highly value public education. I also have two children who have attended both Middletown public schools as well as Middletown parochial and private schools. And I'm here as a parent of a student who will be attending Trinity Hall in the fall. We're very excited at the prospect that she is going to be joining the school as well as the location. It was not an easy decision for my husband and I when we were looking into Trinity Hall. I went to the first open house with her in October because I really just wanted to check out the school. It was, it was something that I was interested in. I love the concept of the school. But I had absolutely no intention of sending my daughter to a school that had been open for only a month. When we got there, I was truly blown away by the caliber of the teachers and the administrators that we, that we met. I loved the curriculum. I loved their mission statement. I loved the philosophy of education and the different way that they were proposing to teach my daughter. This, we've been to a lot of open houses, and this was different. There was an excitement and an enthusiasm and an energy in the room that I hadn't experienced anywhere else. And I came home and I spoke to my husband and I said, please go to the next open house. And he said, why? We're not sending our daughter to a school that's been open for a month. But to appease me, he went. And he came back hours later. I thought he'd come, you know, for half an hour or so just to make me happy. And he said, the quality of the teachers is amazing. When we, when she did get accepted, it wasn't a slam dunk. We still had worries and we still had concerns because of course, it's a new school. So I went to the administration of the school. They put me in touch with Board of Trustee members. We had lengthy conversations about the school, and I felt very comfortable and very confident after those discussions that it was a quality school that was going to be around for the long term, and these people knew what they were doing. I also had conversations with the administration, I had conversations with my friends, my family, my daughter needless to say. And at a certain point, we did make the leap of faith to send her. I am 100% confident that it's the right decision for both my daughter and my family, and that this will be a great school which will be an attribute to Middletown, and I am urging vote yes. Thank you.
Have you stood up before the panel? Please give us your name and address.
Lisa Calandrino, C.A.L.A.N.D.R.I.N.O. and Eighth Committee in Port in Middletown. Domitian, D.O.M.I.T.I.O.
Court testimony about the word dispute, I'll do something to God.
I did. My name is Lisa Calandrino, and I am a lifelong resident of Middletown. I have been heavily involved in the Middletown school system over the past 12 years with my most recent seat as treasurer on the Nut Swamp PTI. I am also a very proud parent of my daughter who is in the founding class of 2017 at Trinity Hall. Last, I am excited to be one of the Middletown families that will make up over 20% of the Trinity Hall's families coming into the next open school year. I am here tonight to support this application as I believe is an excellent location for Trinity Hall. I grew up in Chapel Hill on Sleepy Hollow Road, so I am very familiar to the area where Trinity Hall plans to make their home. I feel very comfortable traveling the roads, and I will feel comfortable with me and my daughter driving it as well, especially given the improvements the school plans to make to earn approval from the township. I currently live in Oak Hill Section in Middletown, right off of Middletown Lynncroft Road. And my residential neighborhood houses three of the most biggest schools in Middletown. We have Nut Swamp Elementary, Thompson Middle School, and Middletown South with Oak Hill Academy just right up the road. Currently, my neighborhood is seeing over 3,500 students and teachers coming and going during peak hour of school times. The only time I see enhanced traffic is for the finite period of time in the beginning and the end of the day at school. After 3:30, the roads are clear, and in the summer, there are absolutely no disruptions. It is like hot work. I plan for it, and I'm not inconvenienced. It is an honor that Trinity Hall has picked Middletown to be their home. I will welcome them with open arms and cannot wait to read about the impact our young women making history. And I thank you for your time.
Good evening. I hope I'm not out of mind in asking this, but is it time perhaps that the board members may need a little bit of a break or anybody else? I would not mind waiting a few more minutes if.
We're going to break when the court reporter tells us to have it.
Okay.
Right? She's in charge of breaks. Does anyone need a break?